Over. We hold the high fourteenth. Roll call.
Mr. Caprosa. Mr. Livermore. Mr. Nelson here. Mr. Rondo here. Mr. Seaver here.
From the great heads to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Read public comments. Public comment going twice. Public comment new times, public comment closed. Agenda, everybody okay with the agenda?
We're pretty good. Consensus?
Yes.
Number five. Trevor.
Hey, guys.
Hi.
How are you guys doing? Good. So I think I'm actually here to kind of help. Uh, I know that I was talking with Joel here about uh utilizing, you know, your opiate settlement funds for potentially getting some drug screening operations for Eldrick County. So I'm just here to kind of help guide you guys along in that process because Market County did the same thing with our funds. Um, it's been super beneficial for us to be able to rely on that pool of money, especially when you're talking about the opiate settlement funds because they're they directly uh we've actually been advised by um pretty much someone from, I don't know if you call it committee or I think her name's Ruth, but she advised us that this is an appropriate usage of these funds. And uh pretty much you're looking for like opiate remediation, right? So uh the cool thing is, is that now that, you know, Eldrick County is, you know, a part of community corrections here is that, you know, you do have that, you know, the opiate remediation, meaning that, you know, if someone were to test positive on a drug screen, then, you know, they're, you know, likely lodged for a brief amount of time. And the whole goal is to eventually get them into a treatment facility, i.e. Tricap, the opiate methamphetamine specific program. So um the biggest thing when you're conveying like uses of these funds is making sure like, hey, the biggest thing about these drug screening operations is really, we're not trying to fill our jail up. We're trying to, you know, have a solution to the problem here and trying to flag these individuals so we can understand, you know, uh who's at risk and who needs help and and get them an answer to, you know, okay, maybe we're gonna send to Great Lakes Recovery, or maybe we're gonna go to the Phoenix House, or maybe we're gonna go to Tricap. So um it's all about a flagging mechanism. So um Joel, did you share the uh the kind of like the pricing and things on that nature with the rest of them? Alright, that's great. So there's kind of like two different options, you know, that you could kind of go go about. And uh these are kind of, you know, rough estimates on, you know, what you'd be using for the year for, you know, for the for the amount of money anyways. Um, from my understanding, it sounds like uh it would be mostly, you know, like maybe using like a correction staff, you know, potentially on, you know, utilizing these screens. Um, that's definitely one way to go about it. In Market County, we we actually hire drug screeners. And obviously their wages are a lot, you know, I think they're around like fifteen an hour, or they're actually about to get raised probably like seventeen fifty um with no fringe benefits. So and those people are very hard to find. Uh, you know, you're talking a very select pool of, you know, really just retirees who want to do good because, you know, they're working uh, you know, two hours every day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Because we have a random screening method to where they actually call into this software, software called Reconnect, which pretty much is like color calls. They call in and they get told, you know, whether they have to drug screen that day or not. And that is usually best practice, especially for like your sobriety court, your drug court participants as well, along with pre-trial defendants. But um so that's kind of one option. You can go like the the randomized option and which is significantly more just because of the staffing, you know, you need to have someone available, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year to do these drug screens. So the other option, which is probably a little bit more advantageous at a at a cost perspective, is just staffing it, you know, two days a week. Um, so you could you could have it be Monday and a Thursday and utilize, you know, just have it from like seven AM to nine AM every Monday and Thursday. The reason why we picked those days is because uh usually, you know, like with with drugs, you know, and using methamphetamine with alcohol, uh with these drug screens, the urine anyways, you can go back three days. So it kind of covers, you know, these people, you know, uh you're kind of monitoring these people twenty-four seven, making sure they're truly not utilizing, you know, using drugs or alcohol um while on bond or on probation, you know, because these services can kind of be used from by everyone essentially. So uh now the the other side of things too, so you have your urine analysis, but you also have, you know, your oral analysis, which is like a ten panel. Um, you try not to use those as little as possible. Those are really reserved for people with, you know, kidney issues or, you know, they they have, you know, a doctor's note saying that, you know, they have an issue, you know, providing a sample of urine of and for testing. Just be the reason why we try to go away from saliva is because we can't go back further than one day. So it's a little less of a window. Uh, urine is the the gold standard, just because you can go back three days. Uh, oral analysis is only at one day, so it's more recent use. Um, so for the most part, it would be, you know, urine screens. So you can kind of see the cost difference there. I mean, when uh I got the the per hour rate for like a correction staff, you know, twenty-four sixty-three, now that's without fringe benefits. And, you know, fringe benefits can be about double, you know, sometime usually is uh, you know, from what I've seen in the past. Um, if you're adding fringe benefits and accounting for that, so you could be adding on another, you know, ten thousand dollars just in fringe benefits alone that you would have to be, you know, thinking about for money aspects. So with the first option, you know, you could roughly, you know, around thirty-six thousand dollars, probably with fringe fringe benefits included um for the first option per year. And that would be the option of, you know, Monday and Thursday, having, you know, some sort of, you know, personnel on, you know, on staff between seven and nine. And the other option is, you know, the three hundred and sixty-five, you know, days a year, but, you know, from seven to nine, uh definitely gonna be more pricey just because you're utilizing more hours, more staff. So um, you know, versus, so it'd be like eight hours per week versus, you know, twenty-eight hours per week. And the reason why uh like, for instance, the eight hours per week for the two times a day uh is because you you need at least a male and a female screener, you know, uh, you know, especially when you're talking urine analysis because it has to be, you have to, you have to make sure that, you know, these people aren't tampering with, you know, and getting fake urine off the street. We've had issues with that before. So it has to be, you know, uh someone actually has to be supervising and uh watching this sample get collected. So um, so yeah, the randomized method is definitely more hours um for staff, which is why it's more money. So um, you know, roughly, you're looking at, you know, with fringe benefits included, you're probably looking at more around like sixty thousand, you know, for the year, so probably around double uh by going with the randomized method. And that may be something that if you guys decide to do right now, maybe further down the road could potentially look at. Um, I think the first option is definitely a great option if you can just, you know, get your foot in the door uh with screening. Um, it's definitely, you know, like having people on a Monday and Thursday schedule like every week. The good news, the good thing is that they can definitely kind of plan a little bit better with their work and things on that nature to make sure that they're making their Monday and Thursday drug screens. However, you're having these people test a lot more, you know, so you're going through a lot more drug screens. Um, however, uh drug screens are a lot cheaper than the hours, the manpower. Um, so that's why it's kind of a little bit more advantageous to go that route. But anyways, I I open up the floor to anyone, you know, any questions? Go ahead, Joe.
On the quantity, the twenty-five hundred tests, that seems. Is that a minimum? That seems like a lot of tests we.
Yes. It's a lot of tests. Um, yeah, the reason why it's so much is because that is the Monday and Thursday option. So you're drug screening these people every single Monday and Thursday, Monday, Thursday, and these people are always on a set schedule of two times per week testing. That's a lot of testing. But the reason why we do that is because that's that's really the only way to, you know, if if Joe knows that he's gonna be drug screening, you know, every second Monday, you know, he's gonna be using drugs that first week and then he's gonna stop, he's gonna drug screen. So that's the only way to truly hold these people accountable. Now, um if you're talking like in a pre-trial sense, so if these people are pre-trial defendants, and I would hope, you know, maybe the probation officers would also think about this as well, is that this isn't forever. You know, we're hoping to do like on pre-trial, we do forty-five day reviews, we do ninety day reviews. So after forty-five days, if they're doing well, we send a review to the judge on our end. And, you know, to say, hey, Joe's doing really well, you know, he should be off drug screening, you know, and then it's up to the judge to decide or magistrate to, you know, decide if they're gonna take him off essentially. Um, or leave him on, and then if they leave him on, then we'll assess them again at ninety days. So like I said, this isn't like a forever thing, but that's why there's more drug screens for the Monday and Thursday option. If you look at the randomized option, it's a lot less, it's a thousand. So like, I mean, the quantity you need is only like a thousand. Just because you're, these people are, you you switch from a model of, okay, this person has to drug screen twice a week to usually standard for for random screening is three times a month. Because, yeah, I mean, because random is nice because this person doesn't have to test as much, however, keeps them on their toes because they have to call in every single morning and they have no idea if they're gonna screen or not. Um, that's why we like it, because we can kind of fine tune it.
How how did you you come up with that number though, like a thousand or twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, good question. So we actually, we went off numbers of our own, you know, and we're able to kind of look at size difference, you know, of how much numbers you guys do here in Eldrick County versus Market County. And like I said, these are very much rough estimates because it's hard to say because we don't know how much you're gonna be drug screening. However, these are definitely rounded up a hundred percent because we want to make sure I'm gonna be wrong. I'd rather be more with wrong with you having more money in the bank. Uh, the nice thing about the opiate settlement funds is that it's not like a grant to which, you know, if you don't, you you gotta make sure you spend every single dollar. It's there, it's in an account, you'll just roll over it until the next year, worst case scenario. So that's why I kind of overshot some of these numbers. But pretty much it's a percentage game, you know, here, my uh Eldrick County is about one-seventh of the size of Marquette. We do this, we just go ahead and adjust the numbers from there. So like I said, rough estimates, because all depends on, you know, how much, you know, judges and magistrates and probation officers want their clients to be screening, you know, or defendants to be screening, so.
I got a few questions concerned, I should say.
Sure.
First one. Um, when this was bringing up to us before, the wholesale pitch on this was zero dollars from the county.
Yeah, this. This isn't, this isn't a part of community correction. So that's why that, like, the agenda of me saying, like, I'm just here as a giving, as a like giving advice, essentially, how you, how Eldrick County could utilize their opiate settlement funds. Um, the, yeah, initially, this, I was very, very uh specific about community corrections, they, the grant aspect of, you know, what I get paid every day to do is is really, it doesn't involve drug screening. So that's on the county, so like Market County.
This looks to me, this is all pre-file. This is before we get them. This is all before the courts could, while they're in court process. As far as I'm concerned, I don't see no judges here. And we can't determine on what the courts do anyway. This board, we just found out that we don't have any control over anything, including the employees. So this is a court thing, not a org thing, I believe, on the pre-trial stuff. On our piss tests that we do now, we do them right now. And we get charged, we charge them twenty-five bucks a whack, is it, and they gotta pay if they get pulled. That's the money it does. This, what I see is just money out. Um.
I think what Trevor said, though, we we we're confused here. Yeah. This has nothing to do with community corrections.
Right.
This is about the opiate settlement fund money that's in the bank for the opiate.
Yeah, and we, I think.
And we asked him to come up with numbers. We asked him, he didn't.
Yeah, I'm not pushing this on you.
Yeah, we asked him to give us a rough estimate.
Yeah. That last meeting, this was bringing up to us.
Five.
You were talking, you know, five would be a lot, and then like, okay, and then this comes like, whoa.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
This isn't something I don't think we want to afford, and I think, you know, from talking with other people, with this money, I think it'd be good to create a committee for this to find out how we want to spend it.
It's a good idea.
I don't believe we should be putting it all in one basket. We should be helping direct community people um more than people that are, I don't know, that are forced to, people that want to try to help themselves. Help them than the ones that are, don't care, and that's why they're in jail. They're not trying and don't really care.
We'll never come up with an accurate number on this until the judges get involved.
Right.
And that's like, how often are you gonna use it?
And this is more of a judge, this thing here, I think, should be more of a course thing. This is.
Yeah.
Ah, yeah.
But we asked Trevor to come up with a rough enough.
Sure, yeah, and and like, you know, kind of, I agree with your committee aspect, because that's what Market County does. I mean, immediately with the open settlement funds, they have a committee. Um, ultimately, though, um you have a committee, but at the end of the day, it is really up to the the board. It's up to you to how how you guys would like to spend this money and see, uh, you know, it used. Um, and and drug screening is a way that, you know, it truly does show, it's it's a way, it's a mechanism, it's a flagging mechanism to get people in the treatment. So it's it's truly opiate remediation at its core. Um.
But I look at it, this is gonna, this would be the whole, all of it, it's like, we got other people that, well, and places I want to.
I looked through some of this, some of this isn't gonna pertain to us.
Mm-hmm.
But we're already, we're already, we're already paying all the staff that's doing the testing.
We're doing this.
So that was a question that I had.
Sure. If you're just talking supplies, yeah.
Where do the, who's testing? Who's doing the testing?
Who's doing them now?
Right.
You know.
That's sound.
Right.
But what's, I mean, we.
So I started making some tractions off there automatically because we already.
You're pretty much pulling, because right now you're pulling from a general fund aspect, right? You're pulling from a general fund, you're paying off the general fund. However, this is the way that you can pull it from a different source.
We could do that ourselves, though. Yeah, like if Sam has thirty drug tests a month.
Right.
You could go back and say, based on hourly rate of pay, but you could take a thousand for this month for opioid testing. Or you could back.
You have a whole. For an opioid.
Well, it hasn't done fun.
Right, so I mean, you can put that on that hourly, that that he pulling from that.
If we don't have payroll set up, we could set it up.
Right. And just do it our own.
Like a line item, different thing.
Right. So if Sam had one hour this week of doing testing, that time is, I'd rather keep it in-house. Keep our own people working.
Oh, yeah. That that's what this is all about. It's all in-house. That's what Market County does too. It's all in-house. But um with uh like, and yeah, like you said, you're kind of already paying for a lot of this right now. This is just pretty much talking about if you wanted to utilize the opiate settlement funds, you could, that's what Market does, but you could do whatever you want. Want to pay for a general fund, you can do that too. The only thing, like, if someone's on probation, uh I agree with you, I think that they should have to pay it, you know, they're, you know, they pled guilty to the charge. Make them pay for it, right? Um, however, there's the flip side of the coin of pre-trial defendants. I I deal with many, 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 many people that, uh, you know, they're innocent of proven guilty. While you're charging them twenty-five bucks a pop per drug screen, that adds up, and these people are on the edge of quite, quite literally everything. Um, so, yeah, I'd like, you know, I mean, there's, there's like the pros and the cons of each of that, but I mean, it's definitely.
But that's pre-trial.
Pre-trial.
That's.
Pre-trial.
Sure.
And a drug screening pre-trial is still one of the bond conditions a lot of times?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And that's up to the judge, that's.
Sure.
Or, or that's more scheduled than random.
More scheduled, yeah.
But we do have the authority to demand a random.
Right, at any time.
Yeah.
Basically, we could spend one dollar, or we could spend forty thousand dollars, anywhere in between. It's what the courts think the need is, and what you as the board decide how to, how to use it. Whether we're able to tackle the added work, if we're doing the testing, who's gonna do the testing and whether.
Right now, yeah, we're getting paid for at twenty-five dollars a test.
And we could potentially offset some of that cost.
We could.
And then use.
Right.
We could use some of the opioid fund money to offset some of those costs and free up general fund money for other things.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, yeah, because then when I first opened it, I went, holy cow. And now then I start thinking about it, well, you know, we're really already doing all of these things. He's just trying, he tried to put a number on it like his ass, so. If you were to pull everything out and pay for the whole shooting batch.
Yeah, and it's mostly, like you were saying, it's mostly your salary, salary alone.
Yeah.
Absolutely. The drug screening aspect of it isn't, isn't all that expensive. It's really the manpower.
Manpower.
Yeah, and however Eldrick County wants to have their drug screening operations set up, that's completely up to you guys, you know. Um, that, like I said, that's the only thing, community corrections isn't even involved in that aspect of it at all. I'm actually only involved, that's my other hat I wear for the county, and that's not community corrections involved, is that I manage our drug screening op- operations there, so.
I just agree with you. I'd like to see a separate committee, just like with the ARPA money, just so they're, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the five of us aren't trying to make decisions for all nine thousand.
We'll always go.
It's.
Gonna come back better.
Else to make it, but get some more.
People rock or import.
Right, and um do some back, some work on it, okay?
Yeah. But we'll say a lot of the, like, the the nice thing about, especially at our committee, um, they're usually very much on point, especially for pre-trial screening, because it actually helps other organizations that are part of that committee, whether it be like outpatient services, counseling, you name it. Usually a lot of people involved with opiate remediation are, this is a triggering point, you know, um, this is a pretty much showing the need essentially that.
Switching to Tricap a little bit.
Uh, that's a hundred percent does. Yeah, that's the, that's the problem. A lot of times people go down to Tricap pre-trial. However, it's not always the case. They go down sentenced, you know, or part of a plea agreement. However, this is a way for us to get it, get it done sooner, you know, because if someone, and I don't know how the 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 other question, this is probably definitely more for the courts than anything, is I'm not sure how you guys like testing, because you have a sobriety and a drug court, um, how that testing gets done, because I know that there's certain guidelines um that you need to test so often for these participants, you know, because if you're not track, if they're in a, if they're in a drug and sobriety court and you're not really, you know, like tracking sobriety, then or, you know, then what's the, what, 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 yeah, that's why I didn't know how, um, is it all through you then, Sam?
No.
Matt. Then we test twice a week, or.
Twice a week.
So each person, you know, tests a hundred and four times a year minimum.
Gotcha. And who do they test through then?
Self or the jail.
Okay, there you go. So there's another person that like, these drug screening operations.
We're doing it in-house pretty much.
You're doing it all in-house. It's just scattered, you know what I mean, which is fine. Um, that if it works for Eldrick County, it works, so.
My thought with the opioid money, um, I like to hit it at the root core. I mean, we spend, and this is just where we spend the money, and this is gonna be with the committee, but yes, I can see some put money here, but I like to see some money put before they get sentenced. Try to help these people before they get into a problem, you know.
Before they get a charge, you mean?
Right.
Okay.
Before they get charged.
Okay, yeah, gotcha.
You don't want to wait till somebody ruins their life. You know, they're charged with, gets to that bad where they actually get trouble.
Yeah.
You know, and they have a problem, being able to get help before that.
Yeah, just like, I think, I believe there is a, I forgot her name, but, you know, education, right, you know, things on that nature. Those, I mean, whatever it is, right, I mean.
Some kind of help out there for people.
Totally agree.
Before they get into that.
Yep.
Maybe he just comes out, you gotta find out exactly what the opioid money can be used for.
Yeah, we got a good handle on that, now the first we get the handle on, so.
On what it can be.
Yeah.
Can do that, so.
All I, all I, that's why I was, the biggest thing I was coming here is letting you know that if you ever wanted to use it for drug screening, you can. We that's, we were advised that we could, so.
Well, we did, I think I sent it to Tina before, months ago, saying, is there any, any of this that we can use at the jail right now, you know, for drugs, mostly look that over, there's different things, but, you know, once we start it, then we gotta do monitoring or um, what do we gotta do with that?
Yeah.
Every year, we gotta do.
Oh, yeah, giving yearly reporting.
Reporting, like, great, how did I not do nothing?
Sure.
So soon as you start spending it, you gotta do the yearly reporting, so we should get a committee, and I believe it should be spent. I don't believe it was money put there just to sit.
Just sit, yeah.
Needs to put it where it needs.
To go, yeah.
I do think we need to do some more testing, though, and then at the pre-trial level, because that's how we were gonna keep these people honest.
Well, you're keeping your community safe too at the end of the day, because if you let people out of.
Whatever number we choose is a board, but right now, the the minimal testing we're doing, we're having people come through the door, continue.
Yeah. But it it keeps people accountable at the at the pre-trial, because, yeah, and public safety is a big thing too, you know, making sure that not only is this individual safe, but you're the public, you know. I mean, it, it kind of goes.
Guilty for meth, they should be lodged immediately and dealt with accordingly.
Yeah. Yep.
You know, how long's meth stay in your system?
Uh, depends on the how, like, chronic the use is. If you're a chronic user, ten days, you know, if you're not, three days, four days.
Because we're doing it twice a, twice a week, you're saying?
That's sobriety and drug court. So that's like once they're sentenced, right?
That's, I believe.
Yep.
So when they're.
So pre-trial, I mean, I don't know how often they're tested unless someone, unless a judge or magistrate is just like, hey, I want to test you and a random.
Twice a week, but you know, after they get released before file, pre-trial.
Retained.
Yeah, it range of it. It's a good, twice a week is kind of a good round number. So that's what this would be doing anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we're at what they're.
Mm-hmm.
But like I said, too, that's, well, pre-trial is all court stuff, and we have no control over court stuff. And I don't believe the court, you know, is to say where our money goes. I think we gotta worry about keeping the doors open and our employees paid before we start hiring, spending old money.
When you're, when you're talking pre-trial, have they already been arrested?
Yes, that's correct.
And then it's before trial.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, for this sentence.
They get out on bond.
Yeah.
Or they're.
Because they don't.
They don't, then.
They're better.
They're out of our system, they shouldn't.
They don't test them.
Yeah, you don't have that.
If they do, we got a problem in the jail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is on different side of the orange.
Yeah.
And that pre-trial period can be, I mean, be a year, could be more. I mean, I've had people two, two years on my case looking forward, so could be less.
I think our courts are doing a pretty good job right now, our circuit court and our district court, I think we're doing a pretty good job, and Sam's available to do a lot of testing as a court officer, so it's working, you know, it's working.
I think we should, like I said, get in that committee and then look at different things that we might be able to pay for, and like you said, we can do a line item for that. So that, you know, get, we can take out of there.
Yeah, Sam spends six hours a week on testing for opioids, we could drop opioid money to backfill your general fund.
Maybe, right.
Right, right, then the opioid money can help fund.
It won't back.
What it's there for, and then it frees up general fund dollars for.
Yeah.
Other items.
Sam, do you guys use Abbott Labs?
We do.
The seventeen, do you guys use the seventeen panel? You know how big it is? What, what is it?
Twenty panel.
Oh, a twenty, even better, great. A panel just means how many drugs you're testing for, yeah, so that's great.
Scan for twenty different items, twenty different substances.
Fantastic, perfect. Awesome.
Thanks, Trevor.
Yeah.
So I don't know who. If we have any, uh, people put it on for next week, both form in the committee. I have to, off the top of my head, I come up with seven slurs.
You, thanks, Trevor.
Hey, I'm just a public, I'm just a public now.
Somebody from the court staff, somebody from the defense staff, somebody from law enforcement, at least one of us. Uh, some kind of addiction counselor, treater, you know, somebody that deals with that kind of thing, and then at least two members at large from the public. And you can make it bigger if you want, but I don't know, circuit much bigger than it is.
Even seven is a lot sometimes.
That would be a lot, but that also should give you enough to hopefully you get, you know, not everybody can show up every time, so.
Yeah.
You know, that was just my rough, while we were talking.
Through that, and then get a timeline of, you know, try to push this to where we want it by October, you know, or whenever, if I know we want to get something done, just let it sit for.
Hemorrhagic bus for the opioid.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
So put it on the agenda next, for next week, for to look at forming a committee for the opioid, opioid money.
I believe so.
Consentors?
Consensus. At work.
Thank you, Trevor. Hey, well, could I see some people in the audience? I'd like to see them.
Well.
All right, here. Science Airport lots at Hamley Field.
So I'm sliding around you now, sorry. Oh, please picture, you can see it up here on there.
I can see it online.
Is that on your screen back?
I don't know, where are you talking here?
Why? There's one big one, so we'll see what. With all the legal descriptions.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, no, this is right.
Right, going, going ahead.
Coming up Highway thirteen.
Is it on that?
On the right, I think we're, okay, this is our, our building right now.
Yep.
And it's.
It's one of the back, right? Uh, yeah, one of mine is.
Yeah.
But that, that's. Besides, you end up, and it'd be a hundred.
A hundred fifty by hundred. A hundred Y by a hundred fifty D.
That's not good.
Side, they're even an issue.
Nine locks.
Nine locks.
And.
Well, that gives room to. He's playing, yeah.
Nope, not just playing, was it?
It's not inherent, so.
I went through there and I got halfway to the end and got to be gobbled.
Yeah.
I know, I read something here, just a minute here. Okay, it says, limited to the storage of private aircraft in minor maintenance, therefore not required license certification for personal.
No, she won't.
Again, for personal unnecessary maintenance work requiring licenses, that's a business.
You moved out of the lead, it's pretty bad, man.
Yeah. First one, that's the size of the lots that everybody was saying, fine, like.
That's the picture.
Yeah, that's true. And I find that's good, that's what we wanted. Well, the only, the only, the only thing I'm questioning is we need an attorney to look at this. You know, this lease stuff. Because. I'm not an attorney and. I don't know too much about that, but. If we come up a year from now and we did something wrong. We do have an attorney, right?
Mm-hmm, we have civil counsel now.
That's all, my only concern.
This right here, though, is the placement of the lots.
Right, so yeah. One, one item at a time.
Yeah.
That's why Joel separated him for it, because it wasn't one big ball.
What size would be good? And we measured out that size, a hundred by one fifty, they figured it'd be plenty for anybody. If they did have something big, they can get rent for at least two of them.
Yep.
But this right here, you're looking at minimum a thousand dollars a year. Per one, for lease.
Mm-hmm.
So you're looking at nine grand a year if we get a lease. That's gonna pay for all. That's gonna guarantee in the future, the county is not gonna have a bill at the airport.
Hopefully.
Above and beyond. I don't think they.
Regular operating expenses.
Right, the basic expenses. And I don't know what the. Actual net asset F A, how close to this line can we put?
I can, that tell you exactly on the picture already. You wanna know how close to the runway you can be?
Yeah.
Can't be inside the dotted white line around the runway.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we could actually, cause that yellow line is where pretty much. They taxi two, right?
Well, there's room for another whole set.
On the other side right here.
Oh, yeah.
So.
We, we drew that up at one point too.
Yeah, so in the future, we could do another.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
With room for taxiways in between and everything, yeah. Yeah, cause that dotted white line is actually a little more than we're required to stay away from, but.
Yeah. I just know there had to be so far away from different things, and.
Yeah, from the center, that would be a certain distance from the center of the runway.
So this is just the.
Just the lot layout.
Just the lot layout. Any other, any questions on that, Mick? I guess I don't have any questions, but before we go leasing anything, our attorney should be looking at it.
And that's the next item, so.
Yeah, this is just. I, I'm not a pilot, I don't know what. Put a B two bomber in there.
No, no.
But. Before we get. Our. Up in a bad situation, we should have an attorney look at it. Like the lease. Yeah, this isn't, this is the sign airport lots and this is an action.
Hmm.
Action item, so we take a vote on that, so.
And we'll, I'll move that we approve the. Lease lots number one through nine as drawn.
I'll send that. A roll call?
Missionary middle.
Yes. He's fighting, he's fighting that human map. Kind of sticking there.
Yeah, didn't have choice.
This, if, if the attorney comes back. And said, this is inappropriate, and what do we do?
The what, we're not onto the lease assets.
Uh, yes, I know.
We can divide up lots however we want.
Yeah.
As we're not selling it, the township doesn't have a zoning, there's no zoning issue.
Yeah, I guess it'll be alright. Consensus or.
I'll go for it. If you wish, you can see the.
Yes.
Now.
Now the lease.
I don't have a bigger version of that. We did base it off of the existing lease. And just pulled out all the language, just the, we got thirteen pages, I think, for that, and pulled out eight pages, being pertaining to. If we're looking at their short term. I think it's in there too, just to make it easier, whatever, you know, defining short terms. Such, but you, I just feel free now, thanks, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
I, I, I want, like I said, I wanted an attorney to look at that lease. Because I don't know.
And our only, my only holdback there is we actually have an individual. Who wants to rent right now.
My thought on that, well, I, I could.
So, you know. But you're gonna miss out.
That's.
Later on.
I've been after that committee to do this for, I'd say a year. And now it's a rush, so. Like I said, I read it once through, I'd like to read it again and. You know, with only three of us here. We gotta really want.
This is gonna hurt, but.
Cause they're off for a week.
Well, they're gonna probably lose out on the renter.
Well, then that would be. That shouldn't, that shouldn't be a decision on something we're doing here, not for one, but all.
Well, we can prove it on, on a temporary basis for now. And then if we review it, if the lawyer comes back with a problem, we can go back and fix it. We can put that clause in there. I'm sure he'd be willing to. Contingent upon review by the lawyer, I don't see him out of the top, he's supposed to read to that. But if we put it right in, in your sign story, then he doesn't.
Well, then we got, if we do put this out on, if we do agree on this, then it's gotta get publicized, that we're gonna put out the release. And then we're gonna take applications. And then, cause if we get more than one person, I want it, who gets one, who gets two, who gets three, we have to draw out of the hat. If we get four rate aways. We're gonna, who gets first pick of that? And then after that, it'll come as, as we come in. Um. Yeah, we can't just. Cause we're doing this really in a hurry to get this one person and then you get to fix, well, what if somebody would have. We didn't have this before.
We're doing it because we finally have somebody interested in actually doing it.
I had different people interested already.
Not with aircraft, and how they were serious, they all backed out, every one of them. They all wanted to build, the guys from downstate. They heard, we had radio silence from them wanting to build. Lasted, I, so that, that was about a week ago. Nobody's expressed any interest in wanting to build, even our local person now is pretty much betting on. Interested in building. You know, they're not saying they won't come back in the future, wanna do it, but. As of right now, this is the only person that I've been made aware of that still has an interest in. And yes, once we advertise it, I'm sure we'll probably get.
Yeah.
Probably get a couple more.
And as I said, it's still, we've got to advertise it so long, so by. It's still gonna be a couple weeks before we can.
What are we advertising, I guess, is my question, when you can.
They're putting it on public that these.
And as applications come in, they come in and we.
Right.
Deal with them one at a time. Yeah, I don't think it's, it's not, we're not advertising them like we're.
It's not, it's not necessarily a bidding.
No.
But we're just putting it out there that it's.
They're available.
We're doing this now. Who wants it? Who, who wants one? You know, to, if they're interested. Put it in.
We'll take much, sure, Sparta.
The main premises is limited to the storage of private aircraft in minor maintenance.
Now, there's, there's room for, this is block or lots, and you can get flexible.
Yeah, some people might want to.
Some people, if they do want something bigger, they're gonna want. You know, and the saving grace is, is these are just the first rates, yeah. I mean, we've got room without doing anything, we can lay out another.
Nine or.
Nine or ten.
I like that ended up, you don't get too close to that road, only go on nine and ten.
And then that's not counting, then you got the whole south end of the airport if we ever. You know. Yeah, we, we have, we've got room to grow, that's the, that's the one thing we've got, a good amount of is space to grow. So, yeah.
But.
I'd be thrilled if we could, if we, I don't see us getting online in these lots, I hope, but. If we do, great, we'll mark, we'll come back, we'll do the next batch and put those up.
But if you don't have solid rock to put that on. Like a, uh. Attorney's.
Oh, I'm all, I'm all, Mick, I am all for having the attorney go over it. Cause I am not an attorney either.
See if they can do it this week. Or buying my name.
It'd be nice, just to, I mean, like I said, it's a pretty standard. We, we. We used a template from another existing. And just pulled off some.
Doesn't mean it's right.
No, that's.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm all for letting it be reviewed, but I also don't wanna see us miss out on an opportunity to bring some funds in. To help get the air, cause everybody, we're trying to get the airport to where it's basically paying its own bills without having to dip into the reserve funds.
Hey, I agree with you there, but I wanna, I wanna make sure it's right. You know, it is.
Yeah.
There goes haywire and it's too late, uh.
And we get this guy in our letter of intent and said, we, we are reserving one lot for you, ending. Attorney.
Right.
Go for.
That makes sense.
Locking in and saying. We are getting a new spot, but.
Yes.
Unmolded and punctual for intuitive, parking on or.
Clean airization.
To the rash or tag.
Yeah.
I fear.
So that's.
Yeah.
No. Your business stop in front there.
Yeah.
This fire.
I know what he wants to use it for in winter, so that's.
He doesn't wanna use it in winter.
But he wants to park his trailer in.
Not in winter.
In her, nothing? Then. I thought that. And take his truck.
He's looking down the road, not this year or next year, so probably twenty twenty-seven, if things are going, when he's trying to. Well, then he may actually. Yeah, this year, for the rest of this month in August, he'd like to be able to park his truck and his trailer there. So he doesn't have to, he'll stay in other people's homes. So he can get his wife to agree to.
Favor while he's there, is he? I don't know. But you said too, I mean, some of them have little apartments upstairs.
Yes, a lot of them, when they build a, when they actually build a hangar, will build either upstairs or in the back, I have, will put a little. Be just the best, I'll do just the bedroom, some will put a bedroom, a little bathroom in there. So that when they fly up.
Sure, yeah. I, yeah.
They've got a place to, they've got a place to stay then when they're here.
Yeah, I'm with you here, but I, I don't see an attorney go over it.
I'm okay with that.
They got the gobbly to do for me.
Yeah, I know, I, I understand. My, my head hurt after the four hours I put in, put. Own pieces together.
Um. I mean, I read it once solid, I mean, like you said, same thing.
It's hard reading.
Yeah, it is. You know, but it does seem to look like everything's covered. I do agree with, maybe we should throw it out a lawyer. Um. And get their. Me, I'm fine with it. If I get the lawyers, okay, I mean, that's all.
Me too.
As long as a lawyer, okay, if your lawyer wants changes, we'll make changes.
Yeah.
So that when you further down the road you go.
Oh, yes. Right. Correct.
I'm, uh.
Yeah, I don't wanna leave a big.
How can we word it? Um.
Make the, make his lease contingent on the lawyer's approval or correction or changes.
On, yeah, on lawyer, on council approval, approval by council. Do you wanna just have consensus on it and see if they can approve it by next week and then, or do you have to have a vote, right?
You know, I think, we don't, I think we could wait till next week.
We have consensus.
So like him, that we're going to do this for this guy.
And we'd like to have a, learn some intent too from him.
Yeah.
Yeah, that he would like.
If.
One lot, two lot, if he wants long term, short term, what's, you know, what's his intent even?
Right now, he's looking for one lot, short term.
Good. I mean, even if you approve it today, you pull it off, you know, it doesn't make. Right, next week is not really. I'd say we should do that a consensus and throw it to the lawyer. And then when we do it, cause if he has any changes, we have to. And now what if the lawyer doesn't go back?
Then we'll deal with this, if we have to put contingency on there, they will.
Contingency on there, I think we should go consensus, right now, that we push it to next week, hopefully we can have somebody look at it.
I, I think you, I think you'll be okay with waiting a week, the fact that we're consensus, that we're. Just, yeah, make sure the lawyer's good with it before we move forward.
Yeah, we gotta put somewhere in there. And then he's happy with it, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, there's a whole, one whole section.
Yeah, I've seen that. He's happy with.
Yeah, and there should be a.
Lawyer might say that.
Should be a get out clause for all of us.
Yeah, though, yeah.
As well.
Yeah. You know. Yeah. But I didn't really catch in there. If they are. They get. We give them, was it ninety days or sixty?
On the short, on this particular one.
Yeah.
It's really short term, this month to month lease.
It's.
I put it based, there's a clause in there that says. Basically, with thirty days notice. But either, either party can cancel.
But the long term one.
I haven't even started on that one yet, cause that, that one would be more like a ninety day or dependent terms.
That. You've got to deal with, what about contents in the bill and the.
The one that I've got the work off of does cover that, that'd be the, it is that I took out of this one. And there's also requirements for timeframes that they have, they have to correct some kind of structure on the longer term ones.
Cause I like to see that all, I mean, in here too, so if we're gonna offer long term, we need to have. That's the next one.
That's the next one. I can only do, I can only do so much legally.
And number eight, consensus?
Yes.
Yeah, put somewhere in there that the attorney has to look at it.
We still gotta vote on it next week.
We still have to vote on it next week, we're just not gonna vote on it tonight.
Right. We're just doing. Consensus?
Yes, sir.
Consensus on that?
No, I have to have an attorney look at.
No. When, when Joel's gonna afford our attorney.
This is the pass it's on next week. It will, okay, no.
You know what? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. There you go. Number nine. I did one question on that one.
Yeah.
You got down here, uh, thousand dollars per year equating a hundred dollars per month.
Oh, yeah. That was the last thing I did.
I didn't know which way you were going, were you gonna go for lesser?
No, just that it could be paid, that one could be paid annually or monthly.
Right, so if they're actually looking at twelve hundred dollars a month.
Uh-huh.
Or was it a hundred or a thousand dollars? I, I mean.
It should be twelve hundred a year or a hundred dollars per, so.
That's.
And that's why, you said, I did that after four and a half hours of doing the lease, so. My brain, I'm getting pretty muddy by then.
Because then the one before that.
I even asked Ryan to check him, tell him, he didn't check my math.
The one before that is a hundred and twenty per month or it's twelve hundred annually.
Yeah.
Okay.
So basically, the long term.
Right.
Would be a hundred dollars a month for whatever term of year. Hundred and twenty for. Just can be called a regular, just a, it's more like a one year to one year.
Year to year.
And then short term, hundred and forty dollars a month for a month to month lease.
So if they're gonna put a building on it, they gotta go into a long term with.
Yes. Yeah.
And that immediately a hundred, I'm a hundred percent fine with that.
Yeah.
I don't know how, make, do you wanna?
Charlie, put a note down to fix my math there.
As long, as long as you got somebody looking at it.
Yeah. The fee schedule, how much we're gonna charge, this is. Number nine is just the fee, what we're gonna charge on.
So the lo- the longer you're willing to, the longer you want in for, the better.
Lawyer ain't gonna have no input on that.
No, that's, that's us question.
Right, so.
So yeah, one, hundred, one twenty, one forty were the, that we toss around maybe other than.
About five years round rate, is there any?
That'll all be in the big long term lease, when, when it goes up for renewals, when it goes in for, when it can be adjusted.
What's the longest length you're gonna?
My proposal is thirty years.
Thirty years.
Yeah, some of them go for shorter, some of them go for longer, uh, thirty years and then renew it every five years after that.
Can he? I, I, I can't sell it. Well, he can't sell it.
There'll be, there's wording in there that if the owner wants out. There's options, they can either. Sell it back to us, our buildings, that we put up. At a reasonable price and we agree upon, they can enforce us to accept their price, that we can't accept them for our price. And if I remember right, don't hold me to it because I don't have to make giant lease in front of me, but I believe the wording was, if that fails. Then they have a hundred and twenty days to end their lease to remove their building. To its original condition, which we would always leave, if they poured cement, if they poured a pad. Not to make them bust the pad, because that's had to change just to us to keep that. So, so the big, the big lease will have all that kind of stuff in it.
This is just the.
This one here will send the big lease to an attorney.
Once we have a draft of it, we will look at.
Okay. This is just, uh, what we're looking at charging.
The month, yeah, and so right now, we're just looking at what we're gonna charge. Per month for the three different styles, timeframes.
And I looked at, yeah.
The more time you're willing to go for, we'd, we'd get a better price for it.
I mean.
Short term should cost more.
I was happy to see this rate from what I was thinking earlier, so, and this I think would do very good.
That's a hundred dollar for that long term lease seems to be a fairly standard.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's, of course, there's differences, but I thought a lot of them were.
For what we, what we have there, we don't have fuel, we don't have a lot of things right now, that's a very good price for. If we can get that, I think that's a good fair deal. And I think this is the first step of making that airport self-sufficient forever.
You're right, you're right there, yep.
So, and this isn't, are you, are we gonna do this as an action item?
We might as well get it taken care of, I mean.
I'm fine with these rates, and I don't know. We approve. We're paying the regular, we're at the annual rate for the regular.
Yes, do you, yeah, fix my math please.
Corrected, yeah, I just said that.
Yeah, the corrected math.
It's a hundred and twenty or, for a hundred dollars or twelve hundred annually.
Apparently, maybe the year only ten months.
I'll make a motion on that.
A second dash.
It's good to see you have a, a two hundred and fifty dollar, two hundred and fifty thousand liability.
That's good, good claims.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Commissioner Milton?
Yes.
Commissioner Ondell?
Yes.
Commissioner Seabird?
Yes.
Seems funny, I was so, so cut there. I'm usually closer to the end.
Management service agreement. We're our court staff here to make their opinion on this, this has to do with them. Same thing, that's exactly what I've.
We haven't received, we haven't received any complaints from them, so.
Census?
Yep.
Census. Next one, Sheriff Department flooring. Just paint it.
Yeah, put her up now.
What was it, the square foot? What'd it come out to total for a square foot? Anybody did that work, craft work?
No, I never went to see what square footage was.
I looked at that epoxy floor, they do do it on Escondaba, but it's cheapest six and a half bucks a foot, square foot, so.
Yeah, never mind. Nice idea.
Yeah. Any recommendations at Sheriff Department on this? Doing the two, all the bids, there's.
Three different.
There's one floor.
Without falling apart.
I mean, there's two different styles that we're looking at.
Didn't the board already wanna go with Flims?
Yeah, but he's. If I'm cheaper one?
Whatever the board decides.
Go for local.
I was honest on that.
And that's, I agree a hundred percent.
I, I'll easily give a ten percent discount to. Any local people and send their money out of town, so.
And like I said, if there is an issue, we all know, yeah, all you have to do is pick a phone call and they say, hey. There's something wrong with this, I'll be down here to make sure it's right immediately, so.
We're doing that. He's well within there. Consensus on Flims for ten thousand one hundred and thirty-four fifty-four? With the plank? Final?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yeah.
Number twelve, website design and hosting.
Joel's pretty excited about her.
This would just be our appeal.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't think we put that out yet, so hopefully it's gonna hold, there's some people.
Yeah, that's what this would, we'd have fitted on these things.
Consensus to put it out there? For our piece?
Yep.
Number thirteen. Mister Home Energy Rehabilitation Program Third Party Management Plan. And this is just a continuance? Or just the normal?
No, this is the annual for the, the existing homes we have, this is the one that you have to take out.
That we've been doing. Yeah, this is the one that we've been doing for, oh, since I've been here.
Consensus?
Consensus, from four key mission. Never right, C B G funding, because nation, remember I had. This is the new one. This one is four hundred. Oh, what is this, the work grant, four seventy-two? Project on four hundred, I think the seventy-two is the administrative part.
Admin fee.
Admin fee. That's what gets us. This is the one that we're using admin fee to be able to bring somebody in Eldred County, full time, or camp.
Yeah, this is approved.
That'll work.
Next thing, thirty-two hours.
Consensus?
Yes.
Census. You know, we're under the, same thing, grant management plan, now we gotta, if we get this grant, we gotta give it to. And to manage it.
You just, you do this, again, the, the cider.
This would mirror the. One that we already have, the homeowner, third party, this would mirror that, right?
This is the one with the financial. Veterans.
Yeah.
Sixty percent, anyway, I forgot it, forty percent.
Forty-six to. I can't, I need to.
Anyway, yeah.
But this one here is a hundred, this one here is, uh. If I remember right, the five or seven years and it's completely gone, gone, right? This one doesn't stick with you? This grant. So if a homeowner has some stuff done, hopes, they stayed in it, I can't remember if it's five or seven. For the previous grants, stayed on the books, this is forgiven. Any questions? Consensus? Number sixteen, animal control supervisor contract. Okay, so look at that.
The only question I had was right at the top. Should be between Eldred County. So Eldred County Sheriff on top.
Well.
And we're gonna need somewhere in their name that the sheriff, there's this, the sheriff department is.
So the sheriff, the sheriff is a co-employer.
Okay.
This is an agreement between.
Okay, I'm just making, I'm, again, my non-lawyer brain is just trying to make sure that.
Either that will employ you.
Yeah, and that's in the next paragraph.
Under the sheriff's.
Of the county.
Of the county, right, so in, in some places in here, they reference the county.
Yeah, isn't that will employ by, by the county.
Yeah, so. The employer is inter, used interchangeably as the Eldred County Sheriff.
Should we just, should we, should we have it like that then at the top, that it's both, that it's? Eldred County Sheriff, Eldred County and the Eldred County Sheriff? Oh, I'm just. I know what our, I know what the intent is.
Animal control falls under the sheriff.
Hundred percent, my, my opinion.
I do not like to see Eldred County, um, here, much as little possible.
Just put Eldred County Sheriff, I think that's where I go.
Other county. Supervisor of.
And that's just trying to make sure that we're. All covered and agreed.
He's been reporting to Steve the whole time, so easy.
Well, no, no, that's, yeah, it's good, it's just put sheriff, I think that's where you go. But I'm fine with it.
I agree with you.
Cause when, when it comes to, you know, return of property, things, it does.
Oh yeah, no, no, that was my, literally my only one question, I think.
You wanna just remove that, or leave?
No, just leave it all, I just wanted to make sure that.
Cause in some of them, it's an agreement between subordinate commissioners, as acting as the other kind of hand. In the, the sheriff, but we're leaving out. The board and the science, just between. Your business handing over.
Exactly.
We don't, we don't need two, right?
No. Two chiefs, one Indian.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just like you said, I was just.
Is he an Indian?
Weird legal wording. I think he's doing great work, I'll keep him, so.
Consensus?
Yep, consensus.
Number seventeen, cost saving ideas, revenue, some new solutions. And the two we saved month, we're making one.
I can't think of anything.
Where can we save it? No.
I spend it.
I'm asking, where can we save it, you spend help? Spend less.
There you go.
Not, not, any unfinished business?
Uh, not this time.
Financial matters, we got board bills, financial reports, raw funds. And corporations, does anybody, everybody have a chance to look at those? We have consensus on financial matters?
Yes.
Census?
Yeah, it's still, I'd like to see how much money I sold for five days a week.
I like, yeah, and I don't wanna spend that much money for much money that that brings in, I don't know why we gotta spend anything. Resolutions, we have two resolutions there, some other counties.
Those are ours.
Those are ours?
Yeah, so one is the U P area agency, that's for the commission and agent.
Oh, okay, I thought it was the other one.
Yeah, we doesn't make up cap, those are. Yeah, this is the one that, at our last upcap meeting, the, the cap board approved next year's budget. So then it goes, like, to the counties.
Consensus?
Consensus, yes.
On A. Then you got B, this. This is on our.
The next batch of.
Do we all? We won't know until I get finalized on it, how much we would get out of this or anything?
This one. This one wasn't, wasn't much, the next one is gonna be the, that's gonna be the big one.
Bigger than their first one? Uh, do we have consensus on B?
Does this one here say ninety-nine?
We're not on that one, go back up one. Oh yeah, yes, we are on that one, yeah, you're right.
That number gets real small real fast.
Yeah. Ninety, ninety million. Unfortunately, they're not gonna split ninety-nine ways.
I have seven thousand ahead, I don't know.
But we gotta opt in to get anything, so.
Yeah, we gotta get in.
And this is just another good reason to start a opium, cause we're gonna be getting this money, plus the next one that's coming up from that one. Consensus?
Concerns.
Committee reports. Making you have any pity?
Well, I went to. Most commissions, uh, meeting, and they're digging up the snowmobile thing again, and it's getting. Getting to be hot. They're taking the heat for it and should belong to the D N R.
They should push it to the D N R then.
Well, you do it.
We had. Since last week, nothing on it.
Hit L M S, but that was kinda.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of anything new to there.
Didn't have a media view or anything, but, uh. R A F showed up with a John Deere tractor for the airport.
The what?
We've got a John Deere, a forty-five horse John Deere tractor with the bucket and the twelve, twelve foot mower. They showed up for the donation.
Oh, really? Pretty darn nice.
Yes, it was, they were, they were working on it for about a year and a half. It took them about ten, twelve months to find where it was actually at. The gentleman that actually donated it, at one point, pulled a John Deere dealership, it was closing down the dealership, so. Jeff Russell and a couple of the other guys could, you know, really, these guys could really use something up there, you should really do something, you know, you're getting, oh, you, come on, you can, so yeah. So we had that, a truck driver that brought it up. So, we're down to. Okay, with a little more, it was taking, it was gonna take them about four hours just to do the runway, you did half the runway, you're taxiway and something else in forty-five minutes on the tractor, so.
Where are we on the animal shelter? Waiting on water.
Sewing material. I haven't had a chance to talk to him this weekend, so.
That's all we have, left is soon material.
Gotta get the ceiling put, the insulation, the ceiling put back together, and then electrician will come back, put the lights in, and then we can start on the state vets list.
How much it was, where's that was?
List?
Yeah. There's a big list, I mean.
So there's some things that she'll wanna see done sooner and some that they'll be willing to wait. Doing something with some of the panel floors would be pretty high on one of her lists. The set that we plan to use, fairly, to plan to use for the main sap. To get some kind of coating, even, and it can be paint, but. And now that you told me what epoxy costs, yeah, it's not gonna be epoxy, unless, unless we go buy it by the can and do it ourselves.
I was wondering, what, what kind of timeline are we looking at to get this done and get it out there for a nonprofit to maybe get into it and. Release it out of our hands?
Not sure, man. Like I said, my original goal was within twelve months of us getting our building back, have turned over and have some.
It is not really on county or Eric, it's on the person that's coming there to do the sealing and.
Plus, you know, we have, this thing is, I think Eric's close.
Well, and, yeah, it's all, most is gonna be all voluntary.
Right.
So we're not, oh.
Yeah.
Tens upon tens of thousands in labor, so. I will get with him this week again and see where we're at. Not tomorrow, we got a few in the morning, but.
Yeah.
And like, last, last week with the fourth and stuff, I just.
We, we have had, uh, somebody in there helping, burning off community service hours.
That's, that's great.
A ton of money for the county goods, so.
Yeah, okay, we're trying to, I've been trying to work with Eric, and we're trying to work on volunteers to try and keep the cost. Down, because. There's a lot of things that need doing, you were able to talk to Pope. There are some trees out of there for us that are dead and.
They taking them all.
No, we're not going to, no, wait till they fall?
No, all they said, we'll move the lines for you. You wanna come down, we'll move the lines for you.
All right, so yeah, so we're gonna do some of those dead trees now.
If I can't find a community service worker with insurance.
Yeah, cause they're right, they're in the corner of that dog park.
No.
Right next to the pole with two lines, the line, our line and the one that goes over to the gas company. There's, I think.
Our insurance company, because if they fall, it's gonna be a claim. So a lot of times they'll. Do it too.
Preventively, so. I'm not sure, we'll go checking on that, but yeah, we're, anything we can, anything we can do to not pay two, three grand to have somebody come cut those trees would be. Who's our insurance? See if there's anything that they'll do to. Before they become a claim.
Right. I just know people have done that.
Worth, it's worth asking.
Um, correspondence, do we have any correspondence?
Department of Interior, we got our built money.
We, it looks like a lot, but I don't think it's.
What we budgeted, so. It's what we in the budget.
I know, but it, it looks like a lot of money, but actually, if that monolatent were private, we could get on.
Well, I guess so. Uh, the ten thousand dollar increase was approved for the drug court, uh, for current year. That, now that they initially allocated, it's not enough to actually.
Fund it.
Fund for the entire year, so that'll get them through the end of the year. We were awarded, uh, from murders. Impact award, so Jerry had volunteered to go down and accept that award. Rightfully so, and if somebody else wants to go, say a commissioner or. You can go, they'll pay for up to three, but we still gotta pay for the. Room and get you down there, right, they'll, they'll get, they'll pay for, for you to up to free registration, so. And if he wants to go accompany Jerry too, but you have to go on stage and then get your picture taken.
Thanks, you got it.
Stage time, if you want to go, just let me know, before we register.
Yeah, I'll be on a plane.
Uh, I'll go, where the lights drops, seven thousand seven hundred and seventeen, some change in credit.
After a light bill?
Electricity bill. And I'll get you the usage in six months. Needed for the license. There's the resolution from Antonorgan.
Urging actions, uh, to oppose proposed cuts to Medicaid, and one from Washington to oppose. M D H S plan to implement competitive procurement process for prepaid patient. And then I got one late, it's not in there, but. I'm gonna throw it on for next, you told me what you wanted me to do with this one, there was a request for opioid funds. I think we should just put that in a. Address. It'll be addressed by the committee, that's what you're meaning, we should maybe start a folder, everything that's.
Related to opioids, and everybody's asking. I don't know, that makes sense.
Yes, no, he's going over now, we.
That's why we're gonna put it together to do it.
And no, I do not wanna be on that.
Pretty sure I know who that's.
Any comments, Mickey?
No, I'm just wondering if Eric accepted the, was that a good contract for Eric?
Oh, yeah, you already have.
Okay.
What he's working on now, so.
I have no comments. Staff comments, no. Uh, so, I apologize if there was any, uh, confusion about the community impressions thing, I think maybe I misinterpreted a little bit of that too. Openly clarified, this goes after we met with, um, Michigan Association of Counties, went to run a webinar. Going back to, again, we, probably part before the force, without a advisory committee, to have. The implementation for those opioid money, so when you have, um. Disbursement or, you know, some proposals coming in for it, they're, they're starting to come in. And when we look at ten thousand a year, ten thousand a year, possibly twenty-six thousand a year. And then, uh, one of the big, uh, suggestions that maybe Tony had was to set a budget for, for the year. And future years of, uh, how much on average you wanna distribute, uh, from the summer money. Figure out how much you're gonna get, and then figure out your fifteen to eighteen, twenty year plan. So that's where this all kind of ties in, you know, we don't wanna over commit, and then.
And then not have enough for something else that we really want.
Exactly, so, that committee, I do have slides, there's how to set up, they, we even have them there, so. Guess we have, once we approve the committee and pick the people, send that up to everybody and we start working on actually allocating the.
I'm sure Kelly or Bob would wanna be on that.
That would be my guess, is if she would like to.
Yeah.
Be our representative for that.
Sure, Mickey wants me on it too.
No, it's two dollars, yeah.
But if it does have a suggestion of the makeup of the committee.
We do.
They're like that ahead of time, so we can.
Yeah, I'll get it, Eric.
So that, so next week we know how many people we should put them in, instead, instead of just my brain, trying to come up with.
I was kind of hoping she'd be here to do our committee report.
Yeah, sure.
Pam? Everything's good. So, we're doing good, read public comment, Trevor? So, yeah.